Call the meeting to order. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call?
Be glad to. Jerry Burmeister here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Who's missing here today?
Shane.
Oh, yeah, Shane Davis. Oh, here, Jen Roberts.
Here.
Princess Gags.
Here. Okay, we're all here. Uh, let's pause for a moment of sign reflection. I have one more month I can say this. So Judge Rusper, if you want to lead us in the fudge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With really establishing quorum, uh, the next item of business is approval of minutes from our prior meeting. This, uh, these are in your Google Drive as well as online. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding those? Hold on just a second. Kelly Shane says he's on Zoom.
Allow them to talk.
Yep. Shane, can you try your microphone now?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Can we let the roll call reflect that Shane is on Zoom? Okay. All right, great. Okay, with that, I will entertain questions, comments, concerns regarding the minutes from the prior meeting that are online in the Google Drive. There aren't any questions or comments. I will entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion.
I have a motion for approval of the minutes from the October meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of minutes from the prior meeting. All in favor, direct to do roll call because Shane's on Zoom. Okay. Yeah. Um, okay, Willie, will you leave us in a roll call vote, please, for approval?
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Jennifer Roberts.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi. Motion approved unanimously. Moving on to, um, the claims for the month of October as reflected in your Google Drive and online. Willie, do you have any comments regarding the claims?
No, we spent money just like we normally do.
Yeah.
Nothing out of the way. Uh, also, I've put a copy of our month ending for September in your drive. Uh, basically, it's similar to the one, uh, we got for this month for October. The general fund stands at one million four and five nine nine five. It gets basically it.
Great. Any questions for Willie before I entertain a motion for approval? Right. If no questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the claims for the month of October as well as the September and October court treasurers reports.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second for approval?
No, second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the claims for the month of October as well as the September and October treasures report. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call vote?
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Jen Roberts.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi. With those things finished, we will turn it over to our department, department reports. Chief R.
Good evening. Uh, month of October twenty twenty-three started out on October fifteenth. Officers of Pendleton Police Department were involved in a pursuit of a serious violent felon. The suspect's actions resulted in a fatality crash. He has been charged and pending trial. Already received some tort plain paperwork, so I'm not going to go any further into that, but I can tell you right now, my officers reacted extremely professional throughout the incident, uh, from the start to the end. So on the sixteen firearm qualifications, all officers have now qualified with our new nine millimeter pistols, which included the Holly Sun Red Optic. Having the optic makes your training and the, uh, qualification a little, a step above. So we had to do that and, uh, everyone did great and the weapons are working perfect. Um, October thirtieth, we had TAC mid-training. Officer Silva, um, was a medical tech in the military under fire. If I read his background, uh, he was in the stuff and being shot at while doing it. So for anybody to be teaching it, it's great that he's on our department. So this particular TAC mid-training, we actually were being shot at and shot using ammunition training while tending to our officers. And, uh, it was great training. The old guys got renewed energy, saying this was great and the young guys, of course, loved it. So, uh, we learned a lot there. And, um, and then Officer Kenneth Wes Owen has returned to Pendleton PD. He filled the void left by Officer Gilli. And, uh, what's interesting about Officer Owen, he's one of the two that left us when it was six years ago to go to IMPD. Uh, it was a twenty thousand dollar increase in salary immediately to leave. And he's now back. So I describe him as the little boy that went off to the world and came back. And he's all excited and, uh, doing, doing great for us already, but he's pretty much turnkey. He did four days of uh, small computer training stuff, but as far as knowing Pendleton, and he lives here, has kids in the school. It's, it's an awesome asset for us. Total, uh, dispatched ends recorded calls was one thousand three hundred and sixty-nine, uh, thirty adult criminal arrests, seventeen crash investigations. And kind of like we were talking about, you can move millions of dollars and nobody cares with your chop a tree. Everybody cares. Falls Park, I've told the guys over and over, you want a career in Pendleton, you take care of Falls Park. And the infamous mirror damage, we've already got the gun. So, uh, that'll be coming out soon. And, uh, but everybody was in enough to worry about the mirror, but we'll be making arrests. That's it.
I just wanted to make a comment. Three weeks, a month ago, I rode with your officer, offered maybe three hours one night.
Good.
Uh, I was completely shocked that he took me way out in the country and out through cornfields and all around it. I never realized your territory was that big. And I applaud you guys for what you do.
Thank you. Well, under mutual aid also. I mean, a lot of people don't realize our boundaries go clear to thirteen. And, uh, once you drive that, you realize just how big it is. And then we also, because of mutual aid and the manpower provided by the county, at, at times, there's only one sheriff's deputy down in this area. We all help each other. So not only do we know Pendleton, we know that boundary outside, we run to LaPelle, we run to Markville. Uh, so, yeah.
It's good to have.
A lot going on. Thank you. I'm glad you came and rode.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and I, I don't know if you have, it's common knowledge, I think. Officer Alford, uh, broke his leg.
Oh, no.
So he's down for the count right now and, uh, doing well when surgery went well and all that. So we're down that person.
Any questions for Mark?
Were you close on the new cars?
They actually, uh, we got equipment in, um, and they built one today. I think they're going to finalize at least one today and tomorrow. Uh, so you'll see the Durango's start hitting the road. Alfred's is a Ford Explorer. It's already done. Um, but the Durango's, they're now starting work on. They got all the equipment.
His is barely new.
His was brand new.
That's what I thought, yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge Sparavit?
Little report in the fact that we're scheduled to have everything transferred and shut down by the end of the year. There will be a carryover period, though, for some of the things that are still going on. But for the most part, we're going to be transferring files. The big thing is we shredded an awful lot of paper. And again, appreciate the help through both of your helps, the guys there being able to be on the scene and able to do it. We're still going to push that a little bit further, too, and the fact that we, delivery is made up there in the court Monday, and then we can go ahead and elbow to give to, so we can set up everything with that. We have to work constantly with the, uh, collection agency to get this all taken care of so they can pick it up and follow. Very pleased with the people who've been doing administrative sorting. Thank God it didn't have to do it. But so much, again, we have much, much more. And we had, had actually had cleaned it up one time again, but over the period of time, it builds. Questions? Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron and Mark.
Good evening. Nothing outside of my report to really touch on. Uh, Christmas lights will be on Saturday. And then they'll be off until December first, but then they'll be on nightly at that point. So any questions, comments, criticisms for me?
I have a real serious question. My wife keeps bugging me. Is the bridge lit up? Yeah, the lights on the bridge?
There are lights on the bridge. They're not, they'll be on Saturday.
Okay, good.
They'll be on.
Thank you.
After December first.
December first, yeah. It will be lit up again this year, yes.
All right, good.
It's our favorite tourist attraction.
You can take your selfie stick down there, get a couple of pictures.
Yeah.
I would expect nothing less.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for Aaron? Thanks, Aaron. Hannah Rose in the planning department?
Yes, so you have, uh, our building permit summary in front of you. Any questions on that? Let me know. I don't have too much. Um, we have some UDO amendments, uh, later in the the meeting. Um, we had a rezone on the planning commission agenda that got continued, so you won't see it until potentially December, uh, if they don't continue it again. The community health network site plan out by the highway, uh, they actually, they paused their site plan review in late September. They actually emailed me like two weeks ago that they're expecting to restart that by the end of the year. Um, so again, that's a medical office, specialists, doctors, med checks, stuff like that. Um, so they at least kind of gave me somewhat of a timeline on when they want me to restart their review. Um, and lastly, grant wise, um, Carrie, our, you know, community coordinator has really been going after a lot of grants. He's been doing a lot of research, seeing what we do and don't qualify for. We applied for ready two point O funding. Um, so we should hear from that if we made the first cut in December. And then after that, uh, I think they get the final cut in maybe springish. But that's money that could be used towards a lot of, uh, civic improvements. So like beautification, community center projects, things like that. So that's all I have. If you have any questions about my report, let me know. Anything for Hannah?
I'm excited about the grants. Keep it up.
Yes, and, uh, food and beverage, too. We are applying for, for another round of, um, facade grant money for downtown. I just don't know exactly when that is due. I know it's soon-ish, but, um, we're going to get on that, too.
Thank you.
Great. Scott?
So major activities, uh, we closed on the Mill Street project. So next week, the guys will start to, uh, clean that property up a little bit. And the other thing is you remember, we want to make sure there's not a, um, stored building underneath. There's rumors, although I'll give it about a twenty percent chance that that house was built using old timbers, um, sort of log cabin style and then modernized around it. So we'll find out once we get in there. We pulled the trigger. We had a third pedestrian incident here at the intersection. And so we pulled the trigger to pull in the, uh, A and F engineering, which is one of the best traffic engineers in the state. And we're going to look at making these two lights smart and have sensors and figure out, um, ways to improve the traffic flow in conjunction with increasing the pedestrian safety. It's just getting more and more crowded, which, uh, corollary to that, we did meet this week, uh, next line down with, uh, Mark Hall, the elementary school, um, principal and Candy Stewart of Transportation. Our street department was there, our planning department, and we started talking about ideas to improve the pedestrian safety there. As a result of that, we made, um, talking to you about, uh, some parking ordinances and that sort of thing. Madison County Bicentennial Tree Planning, um, you go ahead and scroll to the, I think the first photo is that. So Pendleton was the lead for the county. We distributed two hundred trees to all the other cities and towns in the county. Our guys did a lot of work on that. And, uh, hats off especially to Denise. She could go scroll back out. I need to, my cheat sheet. And then talking about grants, so the state awarded us six hundred and forty-four, um, almost six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We're going to use that predominantly for continuing our aggressive paving program. And then, um, we have to pay for the engineering for that and then, um, twenty-five percent. So seventy-five percent is at six forty-five. And then we put in, uh, twenty-five percent. So a third of that. And that's our twenty-five seventy-five split with the engineering. And then if we can go to, scroll back down to the pictures. Lot of ribbon cutting. Here's, uh, Good's Candy. Just down the street. Three rivers. Of course, Starbucks next to it. And then, of course, this one. I have no idea where that is. I'm confused.
I don't know if that guy in the hat.
Yeah.
There's a little camera pictures put on forty pounds.
So anyway, congratulations. Any questions?
Okay, great. Thanks, Scott. We have no old business this month because we've been super productive the last two months. Um, but our first order of new business, um, I would like to open a public hearing for the introduction of the annexation of Larry Street by Joseph Kilmer. Did I do that properly, Jen?
You did.
Awesome. Do you want to talk a little bit about this property, Jen, the process here?
The process is any person can petition for annexation into the, into the town. Um, there's a, uh, the, the timeline or the, uh, the timetable, it's necessary to have a special meeting later in the month. The tenant will be scheduled for the twenty-seventh. But today is introduction only in a public hearing. On the twenty-seventh, you'll, you'll have an opportunity for a final vote and a, you'll have to pass a fiscal plan. I did talk about things like utilities and roads and things like that for any place that comes in. This property meets the contingency requirements. It touches the town, and so there's no issues there. This is what's called a super voluntary annexation, meaning that each parcel that you might bring in wants to come in. And there, it's a streamlined process. It's a lot easier than it used to be, but we have two of those tonight. Uh, one of those is by a private petitioner, Mr. Kilmer and his wife. And, uh, then we have one later that's filed by the town itself with property required. But generally, we just need the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, it was noticed either for or against this, uh, annexation and then we can move on. For a final vote or a special meeting later this month.
Any questions for Jeff regarding the annexation of Larry Street by Joe?
I have one question, Jeff. Uh, is this Larry Street? Is, is that legit? Cause I used to live. Yeah, that's what I thought. I used to live there. And I remember when he put that sign up and, you know, I just wonder if it's legal address.
Who's the name?
I I, I think I know, but I'm not sure I am, so.
And these are the, just the apartments there.
Yeah.
Well, and there's one single thing, too. But as far as the street having, you know, legit addresses, I mean, they're, they're in E nine one one. It's that, so.
I mean, was the street ever given to Madison County or dedicated or nothing?
There is, although, although there is a flooded driveway that that road is within. But the county never took that road.
Does it meet our specs?
Um, yeah, for that. For exit, I mean, it's.
Where's that?
So.
Okay.
It's not heavily trafficked. It's only for those.
Right.
That there, there's what, six units maybe back there? Four units?
Okay, so do we have to entertain a motion or anything? Or can I just close this public hearing?
Close the public hearing on this one.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing regarding the annexation of Larry Street by Joseph Kilmer and move on to the public hearing for the annexation of Fall Creek Drive by the town of Pendleton. And to my understanding, this parcel is one that the town has, um, had for a long time. It was given to us by the state. And however, it was never actually annexed into our jurisdiction. And so that is what we are doing with this one.
Right.
The procedure is the same. We will see the second hearing on this on the twenty-seventh, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, this is vacant land along Fall Creek Drive. Um, anything else? Any questions or anything from up here? Jeff, anything to add?
No, this is, uh, this is kind of an unusual situation where a town enquires property and want to bring in. Usually, it's a redevelopment commission. So fairly simple and Hannah's been, uh, wanting to get this in for a while, while you're finally, you're actually.
Great. Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing regarding the annexation of Fall Creek Drive by the town of Pendleton. And we will reconvene on the twenty-seventh and talk about those, um, in more detail. Next up, ordinance twenty-three thirty-five, amending the UDO. Um, if you look in your Google Drive or online, you will see the table. This was a hefty amount of UDO amendments. And I have to hand it to our planning commission who sat through, I believe, a three and a half hour long, um, planning commission meeting last Wednesday night. And, um, they pay so much attention to all of these things that it's really remarkable. Hannah, do you have anything to add or anything to highlight on this table?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the attachments and anything that went over.
Do you want to talk about this map and what this black line means?
Yeah, so.
That's really the most exciting part about it.
So, um, right now, we have a couple of different styles of subdivision designs. And it was a little hard to distinguish a traditional style, which is like our SF four zoning and our RC zoning, which used to be what was our historic residential. So what we did is we set a, a limit of where that RC zoning could go. Because it's basically not so appropriate to kind of just swap it in a cornfield. It's meant to be around our historic downtown. Uh, it has different architecture standards. It has the highest density that we allow. So by kind of setting a development order, um, we can make sure that we don't have sprawl, at least with that. So.
Any questions for Hannah? Regarding UDO amendments, I'm seeing this house, this went through planning commission last Wednesday. This will count as the second read, so we will not need a second read on this. Um, so with that, I will entertain a motion for approval. Make a motion. I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
And a motion and a second for approval of twenty-three thirty-five. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call vote?
Glad to. Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Jennifer Roberts.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi. Motion carried. Next, twenty-three thirty-six, amending the stormwater management ordinance. Last night, our stormwater board met and approved this, and Scott's going to talk to us a little bit about it.
So, um, just real simple terms. So for us to discharge our, uh, stormwater into, uh, Fall Creek, we have to get a state and federal permit, MS four. And this is an update, a technical update to our ordinance when we originally passed it roughly less than three years ago. Um, some of the, uh, parts of it were left blank because the state hadn't established their model ordinance yet. This ordinance is based almost totally on the state ordinance, model ordinance. Um, it's techie stuff. So if you want to feel that, I'd be happy to do that with you, but, uh, I recommend not. It's stormwater engineering and quality management tools, especially around construction.
It's riveting stuff.
Any specific questions for Scott? The document that goes along with this, I believe, is several. It's, it's, it's very, very many, many pages.
Yes.
Um, Commonwealth Engineering is under contract to help us with that. And just allow me to go off on a tangent. They're also helping us with something you're going to hear about, uh, pretty quickly, and it's the lead line. It's a federal mandate program. Since we're a water utility, that we have to try and identify if the line between the meter, remember, we own up to the meter, but past the meter to the house and inside, just inside the house to shut off, we have to lead an effort to try and identify, um, lead. So we are going to put out a survey, most likely, in, uh, the mailings coming up. So I just wanted to give you a warning and I forgot to do it in my report. So anyway, two sort of related materials. Were you using the same engineering firm on both these?
Any questions for Scott regarding the stormwater management ordinance? Uh, even though this was approved last night at the stormwater or?
It was a recommendation.
It was a recommendation for us to approve it. And so therefore, we do have to have two reads. We'd also have to have a vote to suspend the rules if we wanted to get this approved tonight. Does it need to be approved tonight? Okay, so, um, let's just.
You know what? Let's, let's go ahead. Can we do, um, something in the back of my mind? There, there's, there's certain timelines we have to.
Okay.
Do that.
That's a question for these guys. I'm here whether they mind on that or not. Uh, I will entertain a motion for first read, though, at this point.
So move.
I have a motion for first read of twenty-three thirty-six, amending the stormwater management ordinance. Do I have a second?
Say it.
I have a motion and a second for approval of twenty-three thirty-six, amending the stormwater management ordinance. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call, please?
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Jennifer Roberts.
Hi.
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi. Motion carried. At this point, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow for second reading on the night it was introduced. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second for suspension of the rules? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and this does have to be unanimous for it to allow for second read on the night it was introduced. So Willie, will you lead us in a roll call, please?
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Jennifer Roberts.
Hi.
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi. Okay, the rules have been suspended, so now I will entertain a motion for second read of twenty-three thirty-six, amending the stormwater management ordinance.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for twenty-three thirty-six, amending the stormwater management ordinance on second read. All of, oh, I can't do all in favor. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call?
Now, nobody's going to change your mind for the first time, are they?
You don't know.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Jennifer Roberts.
Hi.
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi. Motion carries on second read. Okay, twenty-three thirty-seven, an ordinance, um, regarding the Indiana Bond Bank and the South Hasen Fire Territory. This has already gone to the Fire Territory Board. And so now it comes to us as we are the provider unit in financial, one of the financial backers of the Fire Territory. Steve, is there anything you want to add regarding this? This is, uh, similar to what we did last year for the Fire Territory. Given that they are funded via tax dollars and those are assessed in the arrears, this is kind of a gap loan a little bit. The one for this year will be paid off by the end of this year.
Correct.
Um, and so this is kind of a temporary measure until they are fully funded and up and running. Did I do a good job?
Yeah, and, and this, um, and there hasn't been a discussion yet of how much is going to be needed for for the twenty-four year, but there is going to be a little bit of a loan that's going to be necessary, but it will be paid off, uh, as this one will be in the, in December of twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Now, do we have to do two reads on this or yes? Okay, and we we don't love to suspend the rules, but we really need to do this in both reads tonight so it meets the deadline for the Fire Territory. Given that the end of the year is closing in on us very quickly. Um, so with that, I will entertain a motion for first read for. So with that, I will entertain a motion for first read for approval.
I'll make a motion for first read. Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second for first read. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call vote on first read?
Jen Roberts.
Hi.
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Danny.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi.
Now, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and allow for second read on the night it was introduced?
Make a motion to suspend rules?
I have a motion to suspend the rules, do I have a second to suspend the rules? I have a motion and a second for the suspension of the rules to allow for second read on the night of introduction. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call vote?
Jen Roberts.
Hi.
Steve Danny.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi.
Okay, the rules have been suspended, I will now entertain a motion for second read of twenty-three thirty-seven.
I'll make a motion for second read.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for approval of twenty-three thirty-seven tax anticipation loan to the South Massam Fire Protection Territory. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call vote?
Jen Roberts.
Hi.
Steve Danny.
Hi.
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi.
Motion carried unanimously. Okay, next up, we have resolution twenty-three ten regarding the amended four fifty-seven contribution plan. So what this is, is when we pass our salary ordinance, this should have been attached, and it wasn't, correct, Jeff? And so this spells out the deferred compensation plan for civilian employees of the town. Anything else to add regarding this resolution? Okay, Willie, this is really coming out of your office, anything to add?
No, I don't have any idea, I think we talked about it.
Okay. So with that, I will entertain a motion for approval of twenty-three ten, resolution of Milton Town Council concerning the deferred compensation plan and the adoption agreement. And this also allows me to sign the paperwork that puts that plan in motion. So do I have a motion, I'll make a motion? I have a motion, do I have a second for approval of resolution twenty-three ten, amended four fifty-seven contribution plan?
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second, Willie, will you lead us in a roll call, please?
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Danny.
Hi.
Jennifer Roberts.
Hi.
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi.
In the same way that, okay, that motion carried. And that's resolutions, we just need one read on that. In the same vein of the four fifty-seven contribution plan, we have the amended perf plan, which is a similar situation, correct, Jeff?
That's right.
Where this needs to be, I need to have the authority to opt into this for our perf eligible employees. And so that's what this is. Any questions, Willie, anything to add?
No.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for approval of resolution twenty-three eleven, amending the perf plan, Willie, will you lead us in a roll call vote?
Jen Roberts.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Danny.
Hi.
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi.
Great, motion carried, okay, resolution twenty-three twelve, additional appropriation from the Public Safety Lit to the Water Capital Fund. This is stemming from the fire hydrant loan that was issued to the Fire Territory. I believe that the original principle on that was supposed to be somewhere around eighty thousand dollars, given that we had a water rate study and that is now going to the consumer, really, there was only thirty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars allotted to that loan. That was really the only need for that, so that we don't saddle the Fire Territory with that going into twenty twenty-four. We are going to clean that up now by transferring funds from the Lit Fund to the Water Capital Fund to repay the outstanding portion of that loan. So with that, I will open, this was noticed in the Anderson Herald, I believe, and also on the store here. So with that, I'm gonna open the public hearing regarding this situation, and then we can discuss if. Any questions? Comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
It's very, but.
Sure. Yeah, we need to edit that.
Just write that pencil at it.
If you notice on the appropriation lines, Kelly scrolls down just a hair, you can see that we're missing a digit there in the eight hundred space on the, the two Water Capital, it just says thirty-four ninety-two, you say thirty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-two cents. I believe that's what they were discussing.
Yeah, we changed it.
Okay, great. Anything else regarding this additional appropriation? Okay, do we vote in the public hearing, or do we close the public hearing and, close it, okay? Any other comments before I close the public hearing? Anybody from the, the audience who'd like to talk about the, this additional appropriation? Anybody online that's talking about? Okay, great, then I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I have a motion in a second for approval of resolution, of resolution twenty-three twelve, additional appropriation for public, from Public Safety Lit to the Water Capital Fund. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call vote?
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Jennifer Roberts.
Hi.
Steve Danny.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three thirteen, a resolution of the Town Council, amending or approving the transfer of appropriations between major budget classifications. So as we are nearing the end of the year, we need to allow Karen to transfer funds, correct, Willie?
Correct.
And so that is what this is allowing her to do. Now, those appropriations still come before Town Council, though.
Right. Before, it was like the one hundred accounts, you could transfer from one one hundred account to the other. This lets you transfer like from four hundred accounts to one hundred.
Right.
So, okay.
Any other questions for Willie regarding this?
Didn't we, didn't we do this last year, do we have to do this every year?
Every.
Every year budget.
Yeah. It's one of those fun things that comes back to the surface every November or December. So with.
You can't, so you can't do it.
I think S B O A is the one that tells us we have.
It's a Denver tradition.
Yes. Yeah, so any other questions for Willie regarding this? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second for approval of resolution twenty-three thirteen? I have a motion and a second for approval of resolution twenty-three thirteen, Willie, will you lead us in a roll call vote?
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Jennifer Roberts.
Hi.
Steve Danny.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Sound like we're keeping him awake. Princess Gags.
Hi.
Okay, motion carried unanimously.
So the other thing you may be thinking about within our utilities, which is a little bit different criteria, shape world counts. She can't parentively move those funds. Like internal water, they can move from depreciation to capital.
Yep.
But that's blanket, and we don't have to.
Okay.
Okay, last item of new business, resolution twenty-three fourteen, amending the comprehensive plan. Hannah, anything you'd like to add to this other than what's in the drive-in online?
This is to add language about our impact, the zone plan. So just a little blurb in the executive statement and the complaint that we'll be adding. We are getting someone under contract to update our comprehensive plan early next year, probably into late January, early February. They'll begin that process because it is five years old now, and that's updated zoning district, so it's new for them. But this will be included in that one too, but we just need to amend it in the meantime.
Excellent, any questions for Hannah Rose? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of resolution twenty-three fourteen, amending the comprehensive plan.
So moved.
I have a motion for approval, do I have a second? I have a motion in a second for resolution twenty-three fourteen, amending the comprehensive plan to reflect the language as stated by Hannah Rose. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call vote?
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Danny.
Hi.
Jennifer Roberts.
Hi.
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi.
Motion carried unanimously. With that, I will turn it over to public comment.
Executive session.
Oh, correct. What I have to do with that?
Just entertain a motion to approve.
We had an executive session prior to this meeting, Willie has the paperwork on that. I'll entertain a motion to approve the memo saying that we had that and that we talked about what the check mark was that was on the notice. Do I have a motion?
A motion?
Okay. A motion for approval, do I have a second? Okay. I have a motion in a second for approval of the record of the executive session that occurred prior to this meeting. Willie, will you lead us in a roll call vote?
Steve Danny.
Hi.
Jerry Burmeister.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Jennifer Roberts.
Hi.
Princess Gags.
Hi.
Is that all we, we have to do two reads, or that's it?
Just.
Okay, great, okay, we approved the memorandum regarding the executive session. Now, I will turn it over to public comment. Any comments from the public, anybody on Zoom? Anybody sign in back there that wants to talk?
Last chance.
Oh, come on up to the podium, you just need to state your name, we don't need your address.
I'm Brian Craig, and I came to the stormwater meeting yesterday, and I have a background in studying that. And I would like to throw my hat in the ring to potentially be on that committee.
Okay.
And I believe there's an opening. Possibly.
Yeah. We have an open house.
Is it the twenty-seventh?
It's at the end of the month, if you hang around for a minute after the meeting, I can tell you what the date is. And this is a good, I guess, reminder of that for anybody that's on Zoom or here. We are having our boards and commissions open house at the end of the month, which I should probably just look up since now I talked about it. And we will have all the openings posted, as well as the paperwork to fill out, to be considered. It's on the twenty-ninth, which is a Wednesday. And so we'll be having that, we'll also be.
That's at six thirty.
Six thirty, yes, and inviting other civic organizations participate in that, Friends of the Library, Friends of Falls Park, those sort of things. But we can get you the paperwork before you leave tonight.
All right.
The question, we're always looking for interested local experts that we have at our disposal, so thank you. Great.
K R I E G, got it.
Anything else from public comment? Any comments from the council? Otherwise, I will adjourn at six forty-four.